Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, June 27. We're going to have a real call to establish what's in there.
Terry McClung.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
We have five.
Stand and pledge allegiance, please. I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, a motion to bring the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a couple of items on here. One. All right, a couple of items. One is to add a GIF grant resolution to the agenda, and we can do that under new business number three.
What is it again?
It's adding a grant resolution to the agenda. It's a general improvement fund grant. And also, under unfinished business, item number three, we have to do number two first so we can defer number three until our next meeting. Anybody have anything else? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Commission reports, committees, we have position one, planning commission is vacant. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, thank you. Skip over approval of the amendments. Can I get a?
Love to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we'll go on to the planning commission vacancy. We've got a vacancy on planning commission, position one, so we've got people who are interested in being on the planning commission, if you'd please submit your application to the council, we can get going on that. The auditorium committee, we recommended and made recommendations at our last council meeting, so I think that one's pretty much finished. I think from now on, it's up to the auditorium groups, I think they're going to work with the CAPC to see about continuing on with their group until we can see what happens in the future, whether that gets turned into a commission or how that's going to work out at that point. Basically, if y'all remember, I think the recommendation was that they continue kind of working under the auspices of the CAPC, and if we can get the tax, if the taxes supported by the council and put on the ballot and approved, then they would be turned into a commission and become self-supporting with a revenue stream of their own. Food truck committee workshop, I don't know if everybody's got their calendar.
There's information.
Bob, you got more information on the food truck?
Well, we did, the food truck committee went back and revised the proposal, I guess, and they do have copies of it. Yeah, are there two, two different ones, Ann?
Yes.
One because of David questioned about possibly having an early start this year, so that is on one sheet, and then the other sheet just added the King's Highway location, which we had not considered before, but the owner actually contacted us and we realized that it is right across the street from our possible new community center and would be an excellent location, so we did add that on. Ann, you have anything else?
That's pretty thorough, so do we need a workshop?
I think James, at the last meeting, James was talking about a workshop.
And I seconded because I just felt that we really need to sit down and have interested people in food trucks and us discuss what we were coming up with, see if they had any other input that we hadn't thought of.
That's why we had the committee.
Well, the committee submits a proposal and then we hash it out. I mean, we can take time during council meeting, I don't think it's going to be something that's going to go away in 10 minutes. I'd feel a little better about having a workshop with it.
I think what we were trying to do was come up with a format for an ordinance, because that's the next format. Tim is going to be kind of in the dark if we just give him this proposal without us adding some information, I think. That was a problem for the workshop.
I think that's why Jim is suggesting, James is suggesting a workshop so we can kind of hammer that way, hammer that out, that way it'll be an easier process here at the table.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
And it would probably behoove us to possibly research some other cities that may have already done ordinances for food trucks to possibly Eurekaize it a little bit, that might save us some time.
That was done at the first workshop and it was done with all the food truck committee meetings.
You know, you had Fayetteville's or something, did you? Somebody did.
We had all the way.
So we can go back and refer to that if we just find our copies.
Okay.
Who was on the committee? You two and who else?
And Steve Beecham.
So we didn't actually have any food truck people.
On the committee?
Right. Well, that was like my number one reason for seconding to have discussion because they're the experienced people and they might think of something that non-experienced people don't think of.
Bob, at your workshops, were there people from there?
Other than the newspapers, we had one visitor one time who had property that, and he was interested, wanted to be sure his property was included.
But no vendors?
No, because we talked to them kind of individually, we were a committee so we could operate a little more relaxed. The only comments, the reason that I felt so comfortable going back and putting in the King's Highway location is the only comments that, as far as I know, everybody on the committee has had has been from people in the community saying, "Why did you limit it so much? Why aren't there more? Why aren't there more?" We haven't had, you know, anybody come to us and say, "There's, you know, too many," or "We don't want this site," you know.
I'll say that, there's too many.
I don't think there's.
Adding nine new restaurants to the mix?
There you go.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a big impact.
Well, I guess we'll say.
See, and that's where the workshop is still hammering that part.
No, I don't want to know what you think.
Actually, informally, as far as White Street goes, there were only two spots that were eligible on White Street. Neither one of them was interested, so there is, there won't be anything on White Street as far as we know.
In the immediate future.
Pardon?
In the immediate future.
In the immediate future.
Yeah, we need a workshop.
How about if we do a workshop at 5:00, right before the next council meeting on the 11th?
Fine by me.
Wait, the 11th, when half of us aren't going to be here?
That's a suggestion, Mickey, throw out another date.
Okay, since we already have one workshop on the 5th, why don't we do one at 4:00? Because we already have one scheduled for 5:00.
Workshop to revenue enhancement.
Counsel?
The 5:00 meeting, I think, is very, very important, and my mind doesn't do well if I go meeting after meeting after meeting. It doesn't do well most of the time.
You're not going anywhere, you're sitting right here for the whole thing. You're not going anywhere, you're sitting right here for the whole thing.
And that's the problem, is that you have to sit.
Well, it's not fair to sit there and try to schedule it for the day half of us aren't going to be here.
We'll just have to pick another day.
Well, there's 365 days in a year, we've only discussed two of them.
All right, we've only taken a year to discuss two.
We can do the.
Be in August.
Do the 25th, July 25th, will you be in town then?
Hopefully.
Before the council meeting?
Hopefully.
Fire pension.
Oh, before, that's 4 to 5.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Not necessarily, because Carrie and John will be there.
Okay.
We can't do it on the 25th now?
I didn't hear a point.
Oh, we got fire pension.
Fire pension.
Yeah.
Fireman's pension funding.
Very important, leave it alone.
Eliminate the pension will save a lot of money and that'll solve that problem.
All right, then that goes back to the 8th.
Oh.
Council meeting at the 8th of August.
Is that the next council? That's fine. He won't be here.
8th of August he will.
Oh, 8th of August.
8th of August.
Count me in.
Yeah, I've only got a desk appointment, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
All right, everybody, let's do the 8th of August for the council meeting at 5:00.
Ann, do you have that, do you have a copy of that Fayetteville, one of the ordinances that y'all gave us referenced in your vast collection of stuff?
Probably.
Could I get one or something from you since?
Did y'all find one ordinance better than all the others?
Well, that's a good point.
We culled what was appropriate from each town, because this is such a different arrangement than any of the other towns.
Could you put something together for us that was referenced?
5:00.
David, we spent hours and hours going over this, nobody took exacting notes saying we're going to take this paragraph from Fayetteville and we're going to take this paragraph from...
Never mind, forget it.
I think generally, they're all the same except in terms of defining the location and defining the hours, that's really the difference between them.
Well, I didn't think it was, okay.
And we would want that to be unique to Eureka Springs anyway.
That's why I'm still pushing for the franchise.
David, I'll see if I can get something together and get copies to the council members.
Just move it along faster.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? All right, public comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Ken, my, I forgot already. Ken Fogo from North Main. I've got a possible budget solution here, and I want to read some synopsis of things that's happened over the last six to eight months, and all these statements are taken directly from newspaper reports. September 2015, aldermen were shocked to learn the city had not set aside reserves. October 2015, Lasher budgeted $125,000 for public works building now estimated at $212,000. Spent $34,000 for Christmas decorations. Raised water rates, did not have enough money to consider wastewater testing facility, which would save $2,000 a month. January 2016, combined $140,000 of planned expenses for a fire department with a loan for an ambulance to be paid over five years, found expected revenue for ambulance service to be $180,000 shy. Finance director announced total in all city accounts dropped from $10 million to $3 million over the past few years. Approved up to, this is April, for up to $80,000 for fire department apparatus. Mayor Berry announces, "We've had our heads in the dirt for too many years, institutes freeze on non-operations essential expenditures." Council approves $14,350 for warning sirens. Now there's a proposed 2% tax on retail, and it's been said that we're, that what, where we are now has happened during past administrations, but what I see are many of the same faces around the council table, and I would respectfully ask that anyone who's unwilling or unable to perform the hard task of analyzing, setting, and keeping a budget to step down from this table. I feel additional tax without responsibility will just lead to more indiscriminate spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Except that's not true, about $10 million to $3 million.
The press gets it wrong.
Well, it didn't happen in the last couple of years.
No, it was, it was a statement online.
I'd like to go ahead and pass this around for people to look at. My name is Susan Porter, I live at 38 Pine Street. Just first of all, I'd like to say that I thank you all and know you, this is a thankless job and I know it's hard, but I'm kind of rag on you tonight. I'm here because I noticed an item on the agenda that deals with transient housing, B&amp;Bs. For the record, I like tourist towns, I've lived in two other tourist towns. I like chatting with the tourists as they walk up the hill in front of my house. What I don't like is the danger to our residential neighborhoods caused by loopholes and cuts that are granted on personality or other, excuse me, inconsequential reasoning. With the approval of the most recent cut, my home is now within 200 feet of four transient housing and about 500 feet of four more transient housing facilities. My house sits between two newer homes on the downhill side and two residential rentals on the uphill side. The residential renters are usually occupied by people who work at the Crescent or Basin Park Hotel, they are on fixed incomes, and a lot of them don't have cars. The owners of these two properties someday decide to go to the more lucrative route of tourist transient lodging, these facilities will be lost and thus these people will be displaced from housing. And I'm passing around the newspaper because there's almost a page of one ads, and I think four for rents. As the cut requests come to this table, I feel that the homework has not yet been done. Each of you has your own opinion, but I have yet to be seen, I have yet seen researcher numbers backing up the need for digging into our neighborhoods with transient housing or for more tourist beds in general. I doubt that anyone is canceling a trip to Eureka because they can't stay at a B&amp;B, but if they are, please let me know, I'd like to see the research. The neighborhood I live is in a good mix of commercial with the White Street businesses and the residential, even though there are a lot of transient housing in my neighborhood, I feel, as more and more added, I think the scales are being tipped. When cups come before you, I would like to ask that you ask yourself the question, is this something the city needs? It's not, is this a need of the applicant? Is this something the city needs and is this the correct location for this? Finally, here's the ragging on you guys part, I'd like for all of you to take a pledge of civility here. I was unable to attend the last city council meeting, I saw one council person throw something, I heard another council person call citizen comments background noise, but worse than that, I think was the treatment of Steve Beecham, the planning commissioner. The planning commission did not approve the cup at 23L, they brought it to you, you sent it back and said, "Please bring me new information."
Hello, my name is Ferguson Stewart, I'm a park commissioner, position four, and I just, this is an information bit, we're going to have a Eureka Springs block party. Have you noticed in our agenda, we've established a Eureka Springs block party on August 20th. It will be a service day for all those 503Cs to show up between 10:00 and 2:00 at the Ball Field at Lake Leatherwood. We've got the fire department, the police department, and we're going to have the air evac service out there and all those service organizations that serve the community. And so it's an event that the community then can see and talk with police officers, firemen in a good atmosphere, because normally they only see them in a bad time. So this will provide them the opportunity, as well as see all those other service organizations, the Good Shepherd Animal Shelter, the Flint Mission, the museum, the, all the other organizations here, the library, they will be out there and hopefully maybe recruit some volunteers, so that's the intent of it, I just wanted to inform you of that event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
August 20.
Hello, everyone, my name is John Rankin and I'm co-owner of the Farplex on 1 Washington Street. I'm assuming everyone has read the Democrat Gazette article on, that came out today? No? I'll pass it around. Rent Causes Labor Worries is the front page story. It's basically, even though they don't talk about gentrification of the neighborhood or our town, it's all about gentrification and the problems that gentrification, you know, propose. So I'm here because I'm fighting for the tenants up 1 Washington Street, because you're going to take their residential parking away from them, parking that they are used to and it's their only place that they have, are going to be able to park. I'm also fighting for me as a business owner, because we try and make affordable housing for these people, and actually if we don't have parking and the next people move, all of a sudden there is, oh, you want to rent us this place and we have nowhere to park. It becomes problematic for us, and so we are losers there. So I just wanted to, hopefully that, you know, the can of worms that was open during last week's thing, council meeting where, you know, they were going to remove parking because of safety issues, well, you know, I just drove up Elk Street and I just drove down Pine Street to get here, and, you know, you're going to open up a big, big can of worms if you don't come up with an alternative solution rather than removing parking from this thing, because, you know, it's going to affect the whole town and they're going to be coming after you soon if this actually goes through. So I just wanted to give my two cents on that. Thank you. Here's a copy, if anybody would like to read it? I'll put it in the record.
Thanks, John.
Well, how does this work? Raise it up just a little bit. No, raise it up a little bit because people are stooping.
I don't know.
Jimmy's tall. Perfect.
Is that it? All right. All right, that concludes our public comments. First order of new business is the announcement of a vacancy and notifying that, you know, we've got applications. Can I get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
As you know, we've got a vacancy in our council membership now with Joyce passing away, Joyce Zeller, and I guess we formally noticed that there's a vacancy.
It would normally be, they would vote to declare that there is an empty seat.
Okay, so I guess I need a motion to declare an empty seat.
Make a motion that the city council declare there is an open seat for one alderman from Ward 3. Is that, is that too much?
Say again.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens if we don't declare a vacancy at this point?
Well, I don't think the law specifically says what happens if you don't declare a vacancy. It says that after a vacancy has been declared at the next meeting, you will fill this spot, but it doesn't necessarily say that you have to declare a vacancy either.
Okay, so in other words, if we want some time to find someone who lives in the right area and so on and so forth, we should hold off on declaring a vacancy?
Well, you may have another problem with declaring one tonight based on what was said earlier also. My understanding, the way the state statute says, says that you must have a quorum at your next meeting of council members, and you're talking about you potentially have one vacant chair, and I think you have two council members that have already said that they're likely not to be in town at the next council meeting, although the quorum can be established by the mayor, the state statute says it's a quorum of the body of the alderman, not the quorum of the council.
So we should definitely hold off.
So you may have the ability to appoint anyone next time anyway.
I'm sorry, state law says we have to fill it tonight?
No, doesn't say you have to tonight.
We have to fill them up.
It says you're supposed to fill it at the following meeting, but it also requires that there be a quorum, when I read it, there has to be a quorum of the council members at that meeting.
So if we declare tonight, we have to appoint at the next meeting, but we're not going to have a quorum, so we should not declare tonight? Is this what it boils down to?
I think that's an alternative the council could choose to do.
Oh, Mr. McClung.
If I understand him correctly, what he's saying is that we could declare the vacancy, but the vote would not be doable at the next meeting because there would not be a quorum of council members, so it would defer to the next meeting.
Okay, or we could defer the vacancy, the declaration.
You could defer taking action on this item like any other agenda item.
Then you'll be putting it off until August.
Bob?
I'm going to go back to the state law, it says that we could proceed to elect. If you haven't, if you don't have a system for your election, wouldn't proceeding be developing that system?
Well, this is kind of new territory, but the way I understand the background of the state statute, it was intended that it be filled at the next following so that it's not left open indefinitely after it's actually declared. But if it does require, and I believe if you read the language, it does require a quorum of the actual council, not of the, not including the mayor, because the intent was to move the mayor back out of this spot of being part of the, putting in the new council member partly because of the controversy Eureka Springs stirred up at the state legislature several years ago.
That's a long story. I would rather go ahead and declare it tonight, and as the attorney said, that if we do not have a quorum of council members, then it'll have to be deferred to the subsequent meeting. Otherwise, we're losing two weeks, and I see no reason that we shouldn't declare it tonight. If we only have four out of five, we've got 80% of council there, and that's a good enough percentage, I feel, to reflect the wishes of the council. It looks like we won't even have that, so it may be a moot point, but I think we need to go ahead and declare it tonight.
Bob?
If we, I kind of got confused, did you say we could declare tonight but not vote until the next quorum, which would be two, two meetings from now?
If you look at your, or statute, it indicates that the first regular meeting after the occurrence of the vacancy, the city shall proceed to elect its member, but it also then says the remaining member elected to the council, an alderman to serve an expired term, and then goes down here requiring at least a quorum of the whole number of the city councils shall remain in order to fill a vacancy.
Right, but you're the one that always says, "Oh, well, now that word's there for a reason, that word's there for a reason." that word's there for a reason. Why did, why do they say proceed to elect versus elect? They're not saying you have to elect tonight. They have to proceed to?
I'm not, I'm not telling you that they said that you had to. That's what I think Ms. Snyder is asking, is do you have to declare the vacancy tonight? Could you wait about declaring the vacancy?
We could declare a vacancy and then define our procedure for election.
Now, I think that the word first, now...
We've been down this road before. We do have a procedure.
What is your procedure?
Well, we had, we had paper ballots, because there were multiple people. The paper ballots have to be made available to the public if they wanna see them. And we put down the name of who we wanted and then they were counted and whoever got the most votes was the councilperson.
So then we couldn't vote tonight because we have to allow?
Oh, no, we can't vote tonight.
Well, you can't vote tonight anyway. We don't have vacancies.
And also letting people know, you know, that there's a vacancy there.
That's important.
Interested people. I mean, several people already know that, but we still need to make that formal announcement.
So do we, do we have to vote on the 11th? Because there's not going to be that quorum? Is that gonna pass on to the end of August?
July.
What? Sorry. There's still a quorum. July, yes, not August. Yes, that's right.
Well, I think a fair reading of that caveat that they put there is that you've got, you would not be able to unless one of the other two showed back up.
Okay, so that does take it to like the last meeting of July, then?
Take it to the last meeting in July. Or at least council could put it at the last meeting in July, even if, even if the rating of the word is different, doesn't require you to do that. Because you need, you want the quorum.
Does that have to be part of the motion? No, that, that opened the vacancy, that's all that matters.
Open the vacancy.
Okay.
Got any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I do. Is there?
What, my hand doesn't count?
Go ahead.
I'm waiting to be addressed here.
Mickey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just see that we have to rush into this, especially knowing we're not gonna have a quorum at the next meeting. I would much rather play safe and sorry and put off, delay putting off the vacancy announcement until that point.
Any other comments? Bob?
Well, I'd prefer to announce the vacancy and try to get interested people to understand that they have time to apply.
They obviously know they have time. They obviously know as of tonight, they have time.
There's a motion, there's a motion in second?
Yes.
On the table?
Yeah, we're talking about it.
For declaring a vacancy, so that's what we'll be doing. Any further discussion on this?
I don't think we should rush.
I don't take for granted people knowing everything on any given day in Eureka Springs. This will allow press to put the notice in the paper. Not everybody watches this, I'm sorry to say. We're not that famous. So I think that's the proper procedure, getting notice in the press is important and I think that's the way we should proceed.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye. Now, do we have to do any?
Excuse me? Anybody opposed? No?
Okay, thank you. I was getting people talking to him. Anyway, go ahead. All right.
So we have 4 and 1, correct?
4 and 1, correct.
Thank you.
Good question then. Do we have to do anything more? We just wait until the second meeting down in July? We don't have to do?
Just wait till we have a quorum.
Just leave it alone and when we have it, we do it? Okay.
If you, if you're concerned that maybe Terry doesn't leave town or that Ms. Snyder doesn't leave town or something, you could go ahead and establish your date as that next one after. That way, the papers, because you wanted the papers to pick it up, I think you'd get away with that.
That's what I was worried about.
And that way, the papers would have a date certain when, and somebody wouldn't say, oh, I thought I had three weeks to get it in. You just decide to vote because everybody shows up next time.
So in essence, if we, go ahead and, if one make a motion right now for?
So moved.
On the 25th of July?
So moved.
Yeah, for reviewing the applicants for the vacancy and voting. All right.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Voting on applicants on the 25th.
Okay.
Deadline for people to put in their application will have to be done prior to the 25th.
I have a question. Because my only experience with this, James, was the one time that it was about five or six years ago when I was watching it on television. My concern is that the way that I saw it happen was we, nobody knew how many applicants there were. It was like somebody introduced a name and it was voted on and in that case, the first person was elected. You didn't know how many other applicants there were. You didn't, you had no chance to compare or whatever, you know. There has to be some system so that you don't just, how do you pick who gets nominated first? Because chances are that person might win.
Well, I think everybody will be, 10, do you remember?
I think what he's describing is what transpired at least once in the past. We've had it happen that I can remember at least three times. But at least once, I think it did transpire that the first person whose name got thrown out, then the council voted on that person before they took up any other names. Other time, I think they took up the names of the potentials, and it may have been there was only one potential that time. I don't know.
I was in office.
I wasn't. Maybe.
Terry?
Privy to who was on the list.
I'd like to make a motion that to simplify the election process, that all those interested...
We already had a motion in the second?
You wanna pull that one back? I'll take my second back to that one, for the 25th. We set a date.
No. No, this is something different. Yeah, we already passed that. This is something different.
We didn't vote on it.
Not the second one, we didn't vote.
Not for the 25th?
Oh, sure. Well, then, then I, then I will say anything and we vote on that one.
Pull your second back and rephrase it like you want to.
No, no, I think we just need to establish that first and then go to the next one.
Okay.
Establish that as a date.
I'll leave my second.
All right. All those in favor using the 25th as a date for selecting a new council member? Sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
4, 1. Terry?
I'd like to make a motion that to simplify the matter of electing the vacant position, that all applicants that are received prior to the meeting, that their names are put into a hat and drawn arbitrarily and voted on as each one comes up. I mean, there's only, there's only five.
Why not names on the paper? Good grief. On a ballot.
There's only five, there's, there's only, well, you can, you can put them on a ballot, but you're not gonna have much chance to prepare ballot.
James, so?
I think we followed the way that most elections are conducted and we list all of the nominees on the ballot. We either put a check mark or circle them. It goes back. If we don't get a majority, then it goes back again till we get a majority, bringing one out one at a time. I don't think it's fair to anybody.
That's fine, too, then. I don't care.
If we have, if we have the names submitted by, you know, Monday morning of the 25th, we can put a ballot together, so.
Sorry, I'll just do it. The concern I have is I think councils should know in advance the applicants. We already got some paperwork on a couple, so we got those in advance. So I think the applicant should realize that they may get individual calls or something from council members to discuss certain issues so that a councilperson has an opportunity to, to get to know the person. I mean, there needs to be a little bit more than me walk in here, sit down, and I see a couple of names and I may not know those people on an, on a, on an, on an application. And that, that concerns, that kinda concerns me. It really does. I mean, I can look at the paperwork, but I, I just, what if somebody comes in in the morning of 25th and I don't know them?
They've, they've already made a motion to accept applications till that point unless they'd make a new motion, I think, to have a cutoff date two or three days early and that way they have to have whatever they're gonna get so they know the list.
Yeah, since we're delaying the vote beyond what the normal procedure is, let's do a week prior to the 25th, that all applications need to be submitted a week prior to that. That way, we'll have a chance to contact anybody that we don't know who they are.
But I wasn't sure that we had that in the initial motion.
I thought the initial motion was just to be on the 25th period.
That's all it was.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, didn't we just have a motion made?
Neither Terry nor James.
Mine didn't get seconded, so it's...
So we still, we still have a available for that?
We have the motion.
Oh.
There's nothing on the floor right now?
Nothing on the floor, okay.
I'll make a motion that all nominees be received by the 18th of July and that...
Okay.
That a ballot be...
We close the business on the 18th?
On the 18th and that a ballot be prepared for the meeting on the 25th where we will vote for replacement for Ms. Zeller and that the ballots be available to the public for scrutiny.
Everybody understand the motion?
Hell of a motion.
We're establishing procedures.
You might wanna tweak it just a little bit and put you as the person that has to receive it or Mr.?
Office of the mayor, yeah.
Someone so that there's no confusion.
He said.
Office of the mayor.
Which ballots for scrutiny? The ones that were voted or the ones that will be voted?
The ones that will be voted, the 25th.
Okay. So all interested applicants need to submit their application by the end of business day on the 18th and submitted to the office of the mayor.
Correct.
And a ballot will be prepared listing those names to be given to the council members on the 25th.
Correct.
Can be available to the public?
Yes.
Sure. All right. Everybody understand? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. No, that was 4. That's not opposed.
Okay.
We gotta do it at some point, so I'll go for that, but we're still...
So are you saying aye?
4, yes.
Okay. Because we do have to.
I think we had a second.
Yes.
Terry seconded. Okay.
One more. Can I ask just a question? When you do it by ballot, is that like a secret ballot then?
Well, it won't be secret. We gotta keep them and then if anybody wants to see them, they'll know it, but at the time, we'll count them and we won't, you know.
It won't be names?
Only if they recognize your ex.
An ex?
Or check.
Or you can fill in the box. Are you supposed to fill in the box?
All right, moving on. Unfinished business. Actley, number one, summary of the improvement district. We're going to have another workshop on that. I think I covered most of the information last time. So we're gonna have a general workshop with the shareholders along Main Street and time has yet to be decided. It won't be an hour before the deal, the next business, the next council meeting. Anyway, all right. Get a motion to discuss item number two, ordinance reclaiming jurisdiction over...
Second.
Okay. That motion is second. Any discussion? All right. I guess all in favor, discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah. Any opposed? All right, go ahead, Terry.
Favor discussion.
Is this it here?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the council to chapter, uh, 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 uh...
Number two.
U B, number two.
I would like to make a motion that we give this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. In unanimous.
The ordinance number will be 2242. An ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to chapter 12.08.01 of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as part of Hickory Street. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has been petitioned to vacate certain land now held as a green zone by the Parks and Recreation Commission and whereas section 12.08.01 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code allows the city council to reclaim jurisdiction over the following section of green zone, to make further discussions of the petition. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the section of Hickory Street between Mountain Street and Walnut Street is hereby removed from the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission for further consideration by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section two, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. McClellan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2242 on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2242 on a second reading for approval by title only.
Second.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
5-0. Ordinance?
Go ahead.
Number 2242, an ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to chapter 12.08.01 of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as part of Hickory Street.
To approve ordinance number 2242 on its second reading.
Second.
All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McClellan?
Due to the, the lightness of the, whatever they call it, the number of people that'll be at the next meeting, let's just go ahead and suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2242 for its third and final reading.
Title only.
By title only. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
5-0. Ordinance 2242, an ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to chapter 12.08.01 of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as part of Hickory Street.
To approve ordinance 2242 on its third reading.
Second.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
5-0?
Right, passed. Thank you, guys. Okay, our next order of business is the Fire Marshal Kelly's Washington Street update. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Kelly, if you want to come on up here and get the microphone for us here, I think at our last meeting, the reason we wanted you here was that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. King, that he and you had talked and came up with a possible compromise or you wanna give, give information on what's happening on Washington Street and your, where you are?
Nothing additional has happened. I think Mr. King had asked me if there could be a compromise on that from my evaluation that he had asked me to go to on, to look at Washington Street and Point Street. I told him the council might be able to compromise or the fire chief or the mayor. My duty as a fire marshal, I felt, was to go evaluate it. Actually took a fire truck, drove the street and tried to attempt to turn down Point Street street, and tried to attempt to turn down Point Street, and made a couple of attempts, and we were able to finally get it done, and told him that my position was really in the best, supposed to be in the interest of the public safety, and I had to basically stay with what I felt we needed to access Point Street, not to weigh in on either way whether Washington Street should be closed in its entirety, we need to be able to access any street from any, either direction, and there are others, I'm sure, in town that way, but he was, Mr. King asked me to go look at Point Street and Washington Street, and that I would really have to stay with my first email that I submitted to my fire chief and the mayor, and he, in the same letter, recommending the distance that it took to maneuver and pull, swing our fire engine around into the position to get on Point Street, even with a couple of attempts at that, was basically 60 feet from the center, no exact measurement, but roughly 60 feet from the center of Point Street, north and south, and I really did feel that I could make any compromise, so it may have been misunderstanding on, I didn't feel like I could, I just had to report what I found, what it took, how, how, how we were able to access it, and what I felt like we needed, and it would be up to the council, or the mayor, or my fire chief to make decisions on what they wanted to do.
Mickey?
Okay, Jimmy, you've been here a long time, just like a couple of us have. How many streets in town are like that, and I'm totally neutral on this at this point?
I couldn't tell you an exact, but I know we have several, several areas where we have tight points, where we have a hard time making a turn, or probably in some cases where people have parked, where it's not marked either way, they end up parking there, and you drive by and go, oh, we could never get a truck there today if they don't get moved, so we would try to notify them and ask the PD to contact them and get them moved or something, I don't know.
Okay, have you all not had some calls in the past where you couldn't get down streets, what, what do we do, what, what happens?
Well, it works comes to worse, if you really have to get there, you can put bumper to bumper and push somebody a little ways out of your way to get to where you need to, and we've never, I've never had to do that, and maybe have to detour, go to another street, if that's available, to do it, some of our streets, it's, it's almost impossible, you have one way to do it, and that's about it.
Okay.
The time that it takes to go turn and go a different direction or another mouth is a matter of either another room being, Burnham being a home, or the whole home, or the next house already on fire then, or somebody not getting rescued, so for me, as a fire marshal, I just feel like it's my best interest to say, this is what we should do on every street, if we can't access every street, and maybe we need to look at them one at a time as they come, not tonight, it's, or, but it should be, something should be looked at, we should advise the council.
Okay, that's the point I'm leading to, is it possible, not knowing exactly what your office would be able to do, is it possible to do a research, let's say, of the city, find these streets, so we can start dealing one after another in that regard?
I think we could do that and give you a report, and it wouldn't, nothing be, give you a report on each individual area that we've seen or felt was a problem, and see what we needed, and let you address those as you could, and try to work with the people to get it, so that they could have some wiggle room.
Which leads, which leads to a secondary problem, you have the first problem, not being able to access a street for a fire, then you have the problem of where do people park, so you can't access, what do you personally suggest, how do you suggest we deal with the circumstances in a whole?
Only a thought that I've thought of in the past, and I don't know what's the solution, I think a better, probably the best solution is consult with other cities who've dealt with that, and I know Hot Springs actually has that, they have a parking authority or something, they, I've tried to contact that individual myself a few times, to find out what they do, and what other, what things they might use, they should not have to invent the wheel, some properties that have alley parking that's behind them, could be utilized for that, and then maybe they have a place where they could park, besides on the street or in front of that intersection, others have no other choice, and what are you gonna do, I don't know there either at all what you could do, it's the way it's been, and that's the way they are, but we do need to, I think the council needs to be aware, the citizens need to be aware, that there are areas we get to that we've fought over the years, and we've just struggled and kept our fingers crossed, and have been very lucky up to this point, so it should be addressed and looked for somehow, start something, be put in the works to get in progress, to evaluate it, and start coming up with some kind of a solution, and at least everybody knows what we're up against, and it may be a time we can get there.
Is this something that your office would be able to do, is to look at the various streets and start making a list of inaccessibility?
We can do that, but I can't speak for, Chief Samick would have to, because part of that is the time to do it, when will we get the time to do it, I cannot even begin to get the inspections done that I need to get done because of our run volume, so I can't say how long it would take, or when we could, that would have to be addressed with Chief Samick.
Mr. Mitchell?
We discussed briefly with outgoing fire chief last time, the issue of the future, and asked, was there some other streets that came up, but I want to bring the focus back to this street, this time, this issue is before council now, and the issue is, is we have a street, Point Street, that comes off of Washington, that actually goes to the very end of Mr. King and Mr. Rankin's property, and then Vaughn Street somehow comes down, curves into it, then it turns to Rock House Road, and ends up coming down into Main Street by the flats here from the, from the city's map. Mr. King and Mr. Rankin, owned by warranty deed, all of block 84, all of block 84 includes, with a little mark where the little log cabin is, it used to be the Scientology, and it also includes the, the little block where the multifamily is at this time. In discussion with Fire Marshal Kelly and some other people, I find that historically, in precedent setting, this city, when identified that they have a problem of access of fire suppression equipment, has actually taken action to correct that, i.e. Breeding Street, years ago, had an access problem, and the street went in and was widened, so then instead of having to back all the way out of it, they were able to loop around and come out. When there's been other issues with, with fire issues that has been dealt with, Mr. DeVito ended up having to put an expensive staircase in for his sky dining, because it was discovered that, and it had, and he responded, and did the right thing, and corrected the problem. I understand that somebody sitting at this table is working on a project right now, and the fire issue has come up, and they're having to address it, so I think fire issues have been dealt with at this table before, when they have been identified, and so we have a problem that has been identified on Point Street, and there's several things about, there's one, two, currently, three houses right now that do not have access for fire suppression equipment. Currently, the HDC is in the process of giving a certificate of approval for an additional house to be built by Rankin and King on the very bottom part of the block that they own on 84. According to the fire codes, that new piece of property should not be more than 150 feet down, the fire apparatus access road shall comply with the requirements of this section and shall extend to 150 feet, the very corner of this property is 198 feet, so that raises the question, should the, be building, should the city be allowing a new building to be built that's over 100, almost 200 feet away, and is not in, and is in violation of the code? Likewise, Point Street is 18 feet wide, fire apparatus access road shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, right off Point Street's not wide enough, likewise, the clearance of 13.6 inches, you're gonna have to cut some trees also, so the fire truck can get down there. If the fire truck was to get down there, discussions with Mr. King, and my understanding with Fire Marshal Kelly, was that they would have to provide a turnaround, if the truck was even able to get in there in the first place, they would have to provide a turnaround on their property, which means they'd have to fill in quite a bit of stuff. Now, at one time, Mr. King and Mr. Rankin discussed with the department director, Dwayne, the fact that they were going to put parking down there for their tenants, so it's not like folks, that there is not the ability to have parking, they actually, if you take a look at block 84, there is enough room down there to accommodate three or four cars that would take care of the parking for the multifamily, there's one parking space that's already used, utilized by one of the tenants of that building, and there's very easily not much of a problem with putting some parking for three more. So, if you're the landlord, and it's your building, and there's a problem with parking on the streets, and you have a lot that's right there, and you could accommodate parking, parking should be considered as not being necessarily the problem that's being declared. So we have before us tonight at council, the issue of homes on Point Street that do not have access by fire suppression equipment, it has been identified by our fire marshal, and we're responsible for the health, safety, and welfare. What would you say to the citizens if we can't get back there and take care of fire suppression, and God forbid something happened? That's on a hollow that goes all the way on down, comes right into Main Street, and the wind does blow from the southwest, and with all that underbrush, and all that small, dried out stuff this summer, I would hate to think it would happen. This isn't an, an issue, an issue that you can say it's not a perfect world, this is an issue that is before council, and that needs a decision, and it needs to be carefully handled, because obviously, the TV has recorded this, and at some point in the future, we need to think about how we're going to handle it, because it might backfire.
Mr. McCone?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
You've been on the department a long time.
Just a while.
Just a while, you were born and raised around here.
Right.
Your family's raised around here, in your recollection, the best of your knowledge, it's always been that way, streets like that in Eureka Springs, we've all, they've always been tight and difficult.
Yep.
There was a time in the fire department when we, we purchased a minipumper to be a first response for those, that was the original purpose of that minipumper.
Is that the one you turned over on, down North Main Street into the...
That wasn't me, good try, we both know who did.
It's still, that's, that vehicle's still in, in service, Terry.
Yeah, see, and that, and that was, that was the first response vehicle for tight places, and, and traditionally, what you have to do, is you have to, you have to, you have to lay a line, you have to handle it, and it's been done for years.
Yeah, he's, he's correct with that.
Now, go ahead.
That vehicle pumps 250 gallons of water a minute, and if we get it right in there, if we know, that's not our first apparatus, but if we know it's a tight street, that, that's what we, that still is our plan, to do, the, most vehicles to meet the required fire flow today, pump 1250 to 1500 gallons a minute to adequately put out a fire, which you need to, 250 gallons a minute, gets you started, and the time you're laying lines, pulling hose, you could be fighting fire, so we try to be better than we were 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, however long.
Absolutely, and, and, and Fireman Kelly, Assistant Chief Kelly, is very diligent in his, in his job, and, and I appreciate that, and, and his recommendations are in the best interests of the city, there's, you know, absolutely no doubt, however, as Mr. Mitchell alluded to, it is not, you know, the best of all worlds, and, and it's not a perfect world, and, and we do have our problems here, and it's not just that one location, they're all over town, all over town, and, you know, I think, I think you're gonna open a can of worms, that's gonna really make a mess out of things all over town. Parking has been that way for a long time, this council, previously, in the episode with Marble Flats, when Mr. Kelly wrote a letter, the same kind of letter in regards to that property, and the council ignored the, that other right of way that they gave away to somebody else, completely ignored it, on Mr. Kelly's recommendation, so, you know, you gotta do the best with what you have, and I think with what we have has worked. Granted, there could be something catastrophic, there's always that risk, but there's risk with everything, so, you know, I'm with leaving things well enough alone.
Mr. Schneider?
This one particular instance, is it possible to widen the streets, so to speak? You, you mentioned in your letter about the roof of the house and a tree is cutting down access, obviously you can't move the house, maybe the tree, but would it be possible, where the curbs are, to maybe set the curbs back, you know what I mean?
It seems to me like it'd be possible, and to know exactly where the property lines were, the curbs that are originally cut now could be, could be off, they could be, maybe there could be room for those to be moved back, and make that wider to turn, and then we could get by with a narrower or shorter distance on our 60 foot to get our apparatus swung in.
So in other words, rather than just jumping in and saying no more parking, we could actually look at it and see if we can cut it back, you know, the, set the curbs back?
I would think it certainly should be looked at, because it's a big impact to other people to do that to, I'm sure.
Well, that seems to affect both ways, you can fight a fire and still have parking, if that would be possible.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
James, did you? David?
I'm gonna go back again, history's nice, but it's history, presented and sitting on this table for this council, not councils in the past, this council, with this fire marshal, on June 27, 2016, in his email letter, which includes Mr. King and the people there, has very clearly said that fire suppression equipment cannot access a street in Eureka Springs, which has currently three houses on it, and which is possibly, quite possibly going to have a fourth anytime soon, and the question comes up, should the city even be allowing more houses to be built down there, when you can't get fire suppression equipment down there to deal with it? That's one issue, but the other one is, right now, we know of this street, we're not out assessing all the streets, we're assessing this street, this time, today, at this table, and we also very clearly can see that the property owner of the multifamily, who seems to be the one that is concerned about the parking, and we're probably only talking about less than 30 feet of parking, probably five spaces or six at the most, can very easily accommodate the people of that multifamily dwelling on property that is right there. That solves getting to build the new building, that solves the parking problem by just taking care of your tenants, and giving them space on property that you already own. It's not like we're asking them to, to park up at the crescent and run down, we're asking them to park right around on Point Street, so the fire suppression equipment can get there, and no, it's not a perfect world, but it's this situation at this point in time, and the facts are before us now. Therefore, I make a motion that city council amend ordinance number 1845, page five, number T, no parking shall be allowed on the east side of Washington Street between Summit Street and Mountain, to read, no parking shall be allowed on either side of Washington Street between Summit Street and Mountain Street, and on page number six, double C, no parking shall be allowed on the west side of Washington Street, period.
Okay, I got a motion, have a second. Motion dies for lack of a second, okay? Ricky?
I would like us, however the procedure goes, to ask Marshal Kelly and/or whoever in the fire department can do it, to look at this particular area and see about setting back the curbs, so we can have both firefighting and parking.
Bring me that.
Before we make a decision on what to do in this area, obviously, something has to be done. Obviously, something has to be done.
Any, any further comments?
I don't need to make that a motion, right?
We can go ahead and go look at it. All right. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Um, okay, we'll get into our, I think our next item, new business is discussion of B&Bs.
Move to discuss.
Give a second.
James?
Okay, give me a sec here.
I think James seconded that.
I guess that's what that was.
Um, as, as was pointed out, there was an article in today's Democrat Gazette about issues regarding, uh, the inventory of, of living, uh, spaces in Eureka Springs and, and they interviewed a few people, um, and it does present itself a problem. If, if you've looked at the newspaper lately, there's, there's no rentals in the paper and yet there's probably half a dozen different restaurants that, established restaurants that are still looking for employees this late in the year. It's a little more complex than just affordable housing for employees. It's also about, uh, a city that's recently lost population, uh, about 500 people, probably due to the recession, and we're slowly starting to come back. The school district spent $10 million to build a new high school and we're just, don't have enough families in this community to provide enough students for growth in the high school. It's a large expenditure for a rather small school district. The other factor that's at play here is second homes. Just in my limited acquaintances, I know three people who own second homes in Eureka Springs. Now, in that article, it said that there's new homes being built on East Mountain. I would hazard a guess that a number of them will be purchased as second homes for people. When the issue of the B&Bs came up and came before our table, we were given some information by planning about what other cities do. And some cities in California restrict B&Bs to only two B&Bs per district. So, uh, large cities have rather small populations of B&Bs. Before the recession, Eureka Springs was touted as having as many B&Bs as New Orleans, a city probably 500 times larger than Eureka Springs. We had two B&Bs, well, we were to have two B&Bs come before us for appeal, turning down by planning. I just feel if we don't do something soon, uh, we're gonna find ourselves back to where we were prior to the recession with a lot of B&Bs in this community and even smaller housing inventory for people to live here, people to work here, families to move here. When we have more available properties, it does help to keep the rents down. The fewer properties we have here, the higher the rents are gonna go and drive more people out of the community and have to look to live in Berryville or places. I really don't want us to end up like some of the, the high toned tourist destinations where they, they bus people in to work in the various service sector places. I think the one unique thing we have about Eureka Springs and something we need to hold onto is the uniqueness that we are a living, breathing community and that's oftentimes what people list as one of the reasons what they like about Eureka Springs, that we're not Disneyland, that people do live here and people do work here. And the uniqueness of the people that do call Eureka Springs home is something we should be proud of. And I feel that every day we're losing more and more of that. People are either leaving town to go elsewhere where it might be more affordable. And it is, it is an issue that I think we, we need to call attention to and be proactive about this, uh, which is why I'm proposing a moratorium on CUPs until we can get this figured out. I know Alderman Mitchell had some good ideas as to restrictions in residential zones altogether. That's a possibility. I just think we need an opportunity to put a hold on things right now while we address the, the bigger issues here and maybe come up with better solutions than where we presently are. We're gonna find ourselves right back to where we were.
Mickey?
Okay, and I seconded this because I'm on the exact opposite side of James. I don't know if I'm missing a point somewhere or what I've asked. Many, many people can't get a, a serious answer. A B&B is a home, generally speaking, that a family is living in. And they are, sorry, it's allergies. And they are renting out a room or a section of the house to out of town visitors who live in this B&B like it was their own home. They walk the neighborhoods, they shop in town, they visit with people. It's like expanding our population. Because of the way we've set up B&Bs, the owners, managers, whatever you wanna call it, have to live there. It used to be in the building itself, now can at least be adjacent to it, but it's not a matter of someone in California owning a house here that they rent out is a B&B. It doesn't work that way. Somebody's got to be living there. So you have a family that's there enjoying the visit of another family who is now part of our community. How does this restrict or take away from our population? And I'm only talking B&Bs. It seems to me it adds to the population, it adds to the city. It's good all the way around. What am I missing if this is not the case? I don't understand not being 1,000% for a B&B. I don't get it.
This, this issue is complex and, and I'll address Mickey in just a second. I'm not too sure that B&Bs are gonna solve low income housing at all. Income producing rental property is based on what the market will bear. I'd like to live downtown Aspen, but I don't quite earn enough money to do that. Maybe my sister will let me stay on her place up there, but I don't know. But I can't live in downtown Aspen. So I think there's a lot of the population that can't live in, in downtown Eureka are probably in the real core of the historic district because of the price of homes, because of the price of rent and on the rental property that's there or whatever else. I don't think B&Bs per se at this point in time are taking away from low income housing because they're mostly rooms in a house. Now, if you wanna turn, if you wanna talk about boarding houses, maybe there might be some impact there. Maybe you can get some of these six unit B&Bs to turn to boarding houses and that might help low income. That's a possibility. But I'm not too sure that's gonna help with the low income thing. There is a concern though, because right now in the code, we're having this discussion about like and similar and the difference between tourist lodging and, and obviously B&Bs. A B&B, it has a separate definition in the code and it says that it has to have somebody on site and they have to serve some kind of a meal. Now, all of that is very relatively vague. Uh, it doesn't have to say it's a family or whatever, but, but anyway, that's what the B&Bs have. Right now in this town, you have 29 conditional use permit lodgings and 17 grandfathered lodgings at this point in time within the historic, within the city limits. So to take this issue on, you, you've gotta go back and decide, are, if B&Bs are separate and tourist lodging's over here. Now, you did at some point ban tourist lodging. That, that made, so no more tourist lodging in R1. I mean, that, that pretty well got stopped. You can do tourists, I think, out, but not on, in commercial, et cetera. But not in B1, but nobody banned B&Bs. So what started a lot of this discussion was the concept of Airbnb, which is slightly different than, than vacation rental by owner or home away or the BMB sites because what happened is that people saw the opportunity to rent a room in their house and stick it on Airbnb. But the only way to legitimately do that legally, although we had several people did it illegally, obviously, was to rush over, as James has brought up, and try and grab this BMB license because those are not being restricted. And that is, that is a concern. That is a big concern. How many people that have an extra room in their house or something are potentially have this opening to, to come at, to, to be applying to get a CUP? I don't know. I don't know if it's gonna expand or not. Uh, and then you take a look at all the requirements and it gets real fuzzy because then it talks about people within 200 feet can complain and if you have a certain percent. And then it talks about, do you need a variance if there's another, um, and then there's the confusion. Another B, is it another BMB or is it a tourist lodging? And that's what the big thing with this last episode that we all dealt with, about a tourist lodging next to somebody applying for a BMB. So there's the issue there. James is ri, is right. I, I mean, on, on part of this. What are we going to do with this proliferation? And if you're watching the internet or reading any of the stuff on there, Airbnb is creating a huge problem in New Orleans and San Francisco and various other, in other places. New Orleans has stuff on the books, but they can't, they can't even enforce it. It's, it's so out of control. It, it's absolutely out of control. So we need to be careful here with what we're doing. There was just an, an article the other day, someplace in Worcester. This community found out the lady that moved in across the street was renting rooms for $39 a night on Airbnb and there was just traffic coming and going all over and strangers and rightly so. I totally understand and get what the residents in these areas in town are saying. They want their residential area, they want the security, they, they want their environment and they don't want it necessarily overburdened with transient people in tourist lodging or BMBs. I mean, I, I do get that and I, I don't disagree with them at all. But I do worry, because I think about two or three months ago, James, I brought up the issue of putting a moratorium on at that time and you said you didn't believe in moratorium. So I'm kinda surprised that now all of a sudden you agree with one, wanting one. That surprises me, but I understand where you're coming from. I have gone to every workshop that planning has had and sat there and listened to them and watched what's going on. I really am concerned, even if we do a moratorium now, and this is nothing against any of those commissioners, those wonderful people that sit there each individually, but as a group, I just really am concerned that they would be able to handle, whether they can take this issue on and get anything back to us. I really do. I just, I don't see it.
James?
Um, let me just change, change the characterization of the B&Bs. Uh, it's not necessarily a family that operates a BMB. A lot of them are managers. And, uh, I wish it was families. The two that came before us were single unit B&Bs. I mean, it's possible those could have been converted easily to house a family. Uh, that, that's more housing out of the inventory. And I'm not talking about low income housing necessarily. I, I am concerned about the future of the community and the future of the community is about families. And the fewer homes we have available in this community, the fewer families we're gonna be having, living here that support the tax base, that send kids to the schools, that shop in our local grocery stores, that frequent the restaurants in the community. When we lose the fabric of being a community, we lose probably one of the best draws we have about Eureka Springs. I mean, it's kinda corny, but if you're on Facebook, we're hippies live. We're one of the 10 cities in America. We stand to, we stand to lose that. So it's, and it's not, somehow it got off on, to the urban core. I'm not talking about the urban core. I'm talking about the city as a whole. I'm talking about every residential district in the city. And slowly but surely, we're gonna find ourselves back to where we had 80 B&Bs. And we have an opportunity right now because of the recession that they're at a low number. And if we sit here and do nothing and the handwriting's on the wall, if you don't see it coming at us, you should pay better attention because there's gonna be more and more people taking inventory out for prospective families, people that work and live here. It's going to tear at the fabric of the neighborhoods. You had a lady here address, how many were within just a stone's throw of her property? And we can sit here and do nothing and then some way later down the road, we're gonna lament the fact that we didn't shut the barn door and now the horses are all out. But, you know, we can, we can do nothing or we can be proactive and establish a moratorium on CUPs for B&Bs, work with planning to get a lot of these things worked out and develop a proactive plan for the future of the community, or we can just end up where we were 10 years ago.
Mickey?
Um, okay, I just, I never watch commercials, but I've been watching those Airbnb commercials. And they say exactly what I've been trying to say. Don't go visit, live there. That's exactly what they say. When they talk, they're talking, of course, we're in America, so they're talking places like in Paris and stuff like that. They're saying, don't go visit Paris, live there. Go to this BMB. That's what they're talking about. And that's what I've been saying all these years. If you have a BMB, whether it's a manager or family, until recently it was always families, you have your local people living in the BMB or at the BMB and then you have your visitors who become a temporary local. And this, this is what I'm saying. I just, I don't understand the problem. You did a better job explaining than anybody has in the last six months, okay? But that still doesn't get, years ago in the good old days of tourism, third weekend in October, War Eagle Weekend, remember what that was like? 100,000 people in a three day weekend. They slept as far away as Little Rock to be able to come out here to War Eagle. All of us, at that time, younger families who had kids, we took turns. I would take in 10 kids from the classes that my sons were in so that those parents could rent out their room for that weekend to visitors for War Eagle. And we took turns, we went on a rotating basis so everybody had a chance to do it. Now, that was only for that one weekend, but we did those kinds of things. And we had visitors stay with us, they became family, they became local and repeat customers. All I'm saying is I don't wanna see us tell visitors, we don't want you in our neighborhoods, unless you're evil, but at the same time, I understand staying, staying safe and not having 5 million cars driving. So I'm really thinking this might be another one of those things we need to sit down and hash out in regards to wordage. Can we go back to the wordage BMBs used to have? You must live on the premises as opposed to adjacent to. You know, something, anything, is there something we can do to control so we don't end up like New Orleans, but at the same time, we don't cut off our nose to spite our face? Almost all the people I have met or talked to staying at BMBs have been really fine, fun people and it's been a pleasure to chat with them. I'd hate to lose that.
David?
James brought up a good point somewhere, I don't remember where it was, about the percentage of taxes that are coming from BMBs or tourist lodging. And obviously, B and Bs, I think, were up just double digits, 15, 16%, but...
No, 7.
7. But cabins and cottages were up 35%, something...
31.
31%. So there is a shift now in a lot. You also find the B and Bs are getting a lot of criticism for one-night stays. So we have almost 30, 47 conditional, well, between conditional use and grandfathered lodgings.
Does that include tourist lodgings?
Yes, sir. It does. Yes, sir. And God knows how many motels and how many rooms out there on the highway. I mean, we've got plenty of them and how many...
It does include tourist lodging?
Yes, sir. It says here, conditional use permits would cover, and it says lodge, it's lodging, just so. Yeah, some of these places are cottages, Wildflower Cottage, et cetera, like that. Elk Street Cottage, Hidden Springs. Speaking of Elk Street Cottage, but anyway. So there's quite a bit of lodging options with, you know, within the city, not including the hotels and motels, obviously, that are out up on the highway. Yes, a moratorium and sending it back to the commission makes total sense. I guess I just don't have the comfort level that they're going to produce anything for us out of it. So I'm going to, and because we were still arguing with the discussion and it was very obvious with this last issue that came up on the Elk Street thing of the issue of all of a sudden similar applies and then it didn't apply and variances and all of that stuff, it got very difficult. Yeah, the code could be written, rewritten and cleaned up a lot. And there's one thing for sure. We do need to do something, folks, because there is a door and it's still open. And we very clearly, when we realized there was a problem with weakling lodging, we slammed the door shut and we put an end to that quick because we knew it was getting out of control. And it is fixed and it's done. But the door for this B and B license is open. There is something else you can consider. If you want to go on the basis that B and Bs and tourist lodging are similar and if you ban tourist lodging, then why don't you, if you want to simply just put an end to it and close it, then just ban B and Bs in R1. R1. That's a real simple, fast, clean solution. Now, coming from me, I shouldn't be even saying that because obviously I would have a self-interest in it because I own a B and B. So that's probably not even fair for me to say. But that is a quick, clean way to do it. But if not, at least what James has done is a moratorium. But you're, and you're going to have to put a really decent length of time on it because I don't think planning is going to produce something quick.
Again, I'm going to go back historically. And that is back to the Latimer case on Hillside. And it was a real difficult lawsuit and all with the city. And after that, and I was on the planning commission then and Mr. Leswick and a lot of people were involved in that. And, you know, some, this stuff was all hammered out. And it was done. And everybody understood it. And you had to get a CUP. You had to have the variance. Everybody understood it and it went fine. But as time progressed, people change and interpretations change. And that is the problem. And everything gets twisted. Because I see it all now. It's not the way it was all structured 15 years ago. It's just not. Because people have, well, no, this is the way it is. Well, it's not. But then people go along with it and then you're hung out the dry. You know, the city officials, that was the problem I had with this last one over on Elk Street because it was stated that they were told by two city employees that being no problem getting approved. And that's not the way we're supposed to do business. And no, they are advised what the process is, but no opinion should ever be given. And that's basically why I went along with it because of that misinformation provided by us. And, you know, we just got, we got to be better than that. So I think that the moratorium thing is good because I think the planning commission is going to have to wade into it. And then we're going to have to butcher it up too and come up with what we think is the appropriate thing for the city once again. So everyone has a clear and distinct understanding, once more, what the law is. Because it certainly doesn't exist right now.
Well, I would like to know if we're going to have a motion or whatever on a moratorium, exactly what we want to accomplish while the moratorium is in place. Because we've kind of listed all of society's ills and said, okay, let's put a moratorium on the B and Bs and we'll fix it. I mean, the new housing complex up on East Mountain, should we make a law that people can't have second homes here? You know, you can't legislate opening up your community.
The motion is dealing with a moratorium.
Oh, well, but the moratorium, what's the purpose of the moratorium?
Obviously, to give the planning commission time to work on the B and B ordinance.
That's what they, that's what Nikki and Terry are saying.
There hadn't been a motion yet, but that was the motion.
I'd be more than happy to make one.
Can I make one little comment first?
Well, let me make a motion, then we'll have a comment. Period.
Well, so you can do a proper motion.
I would move to have a six-month moratorium on CUPs for B and Bs. Simple as that.
Citywide?
Sorry, citywide, in residential zones.
Don't you need a reason?
Or what reason?
No, you don't need a reason.
I do.
Okay. I'll give you some reasons. A decline in... Okay, we'll wait for a second.
I think we really need the motion. The motion doesn't need to include the reason. Do I get a second?
Second. It can be amended, so.
Yeah, all right. James?
Just to address the issue that Mickey brought up. And I've watched those same commercials about Airbnb and stay, live in... Well, you're not living in Paris when you spend one night there. You're staying there. It's not, you're not living there. It is advertised.
Part of the family.
Excuse me, I'm speaking. It is advertising and it is a commercial. The other aspect we're not considering here is what happens every time we do grant a CUP in a residential zone? And that is that you dilute the value of commercial property in the city by establishing a commercial piece of property in a residential zone. So every time you do that, you lessen the availability of somebody possibly developing something in the commercial zone because you've given them, in essence, a commercial piece of property in a residential zone.
Mickey?
I'm getting so confused. So in other words, where I live in my little residential neighborhood, now that all my kids are grown and out, if I wanted to do a B and B using their upstairs bedroom and bathroom and stuff like that because I'm not in a commercial zone, I can't do it? I mean, that's what you'd be saying? Could only be in a commercial zone? That doesn't make sense. All of a sudden, I have half a house that's empty. I'm supposed to move my house?
That's not what he said. That's not what he said.
Well, that's what it sounded like. Okay, is this a situation, this rewording of language, this updating of language, clarifying of language, is this something that we could or should have a committee work on rather than dumping it on planning? But something that knowledgeable people and concerned people could get together and discuss the wordage?
In my opinion, I think it needs to go back to planning for that because they're the ones who ultimately enforce and look at the, not enforce, but look and make determinations on the CUP. And they have to come up with what they feel their boundaries and definitions are. Then it comes to the council for any recommendations. And we massage it at that point if we feel needed.
Okay. I mean, I know that's procedure. What I'm saying is because of the clarification...
I believe it needs to go back to planning. That's my opinion.
They don't need help?
Planning has help within the municipal league.
Again, the local help of people involved.
They've had several workshops on this already. Theoretically, yes, it should go back to planning and they should produce something. When we asked for the food truck thing, the mayor set up a committee and look what we got. We got something. It worked real well. Planning should be able to provide the same thing to us. I, I'm just going to say again, I question that we're going to get to something. But I think by sending it back and telling them, we want something, I guess we're going to find out.
Well, I think you would do better if you defined what you want from them. Because right now, if I was on planning, you're just sending me, again, to a moratorium on B and Bs. You want me to clarify the law on B and Bs?
Rewrite it, clarify it, whatever.
I think they, I think what we would all be wanting from them is that they go through the regulations, which are very fragmented in different places, and pull it together. And the first thing they have to do is decide, is a B and B similar to tourist lodging, like or similar? And once they get past that point, then it shouldn't be very hard to go through and find the different regulations that are applying and adapt them. Are you going to leave the 200-foot rule for neighbors at 20%? Are you going to leave the 200-foot rule of like or similar? And there's a couple other sticking points. So could they do it? Yes, if we give them, give them direction, as you said, and keep them focused. I hope they can pull together. But there are very, it's going to be interesting. The dynamics are going to be interesting.
James?
You know, it gives us a chance to be bold also in our approach. Like David brought up the issue of about restricting them out of R1, which needs to be a consideration. You know, it gives us an opportunity to look at this with fresh eyes because the town is changing. And the point that I agree with you wholeheartedly is there's a fair amount of people buying second homes in Eureka Springs. And I don't know any way that in this democracy, you could say, I'm sorry, you can't buy a second home in Eureka Springs. Where do I base anything like that on? But when I see the fragmentation of our residential zones, that's when I can do something about it. So this could be an opportunity for us to look at this with fresh eyes and be dynamic in how we approach this issue.
See, now you're not sending anything to planning, asking them... You know, there's a difference between asking them to clarify the similar and same and clarify the percentage of neighbors versus make it more restrictive so we have less B and Bs. That's...
No, I don't think we need, I mean, this is just my opinion. And that's for all fours and going back to Terry when he's talking about the history. I was also involved in that 200-foot rule. My recollection of what those interpretations were is different than what the planning commission came up with this time. I think the planning commission recognizes that because of all the, because of what this table did and because of what happened at the last two, three meetings they've had. I think they recognize that that ordinance needs to be looked at. What David suggested is, you know, it's just another approach. I don't think it's up to us to say, unless you want to make the motion that we ban B and Bs from residential and planning commission give, no, wait. And they do that. And I don't think we want to do that because we want to give them, don't limit them on what they're going to come up with and keep an open mind on what the solutions are. Terry?
I think we lost a very good, qualified member of the planning commission because of ambiguity, basically. And that's it, you know? And that's unfortunate. So I think, you know, we have the clear message that we need to clean it up. And the best way to do that is to have a moratorium so there's not that pressure that somebody can come and apply and say, I want my bed and breakfast and I want it now. And plus, what it does, it will clean everything up because, you know, I really feel violated by people that abuse the ordinances that we have and operate illegally. I'm sorry. It's just, what's, what don't you understand? You know, you're going to rip us off or you're going to, or you're going to play by the rules? You want to live here, play by the rules.
So we need to clarify the language. Right. All of it.
I, you know, that's this one other element too. When you have all these rules, we have to remember, somebody's supposed to enforce them.
That's right.
And when you don't have enforcement of lots of different things, you know what you get? The other thing is, it's great that y'all, when you developed all this stuff and you worked on it, but think how many people it's moved through since y'all sat on that room and came up with that. And all they have is that word on a piece of paper. That's all they got. And who would have ever thought that all of a sudden similar and like now has a different version and it got confusing? And we did. We lost a very strong, oriented, down-in-the-trenches person from planning because of the ambiguity of what happened and the ambiguity that happened at planning with, should have variants been there, shouldn't have been there, and all that went on with that process. And that's why we all sat here pretty well and said, you know what? This one's going through because this one was just a huge screwed-up mess. And those people didn't deserve it. But we still have a hole and we need to take a look. Do we want, I mean, do, what are we going to do with B and Bs? And so let's send it back to planning and let's hope that they can get it together and get us something back.
Exposed.
And so what was the motion so we can...
Six-month moratorium on CUPs for B and Bs.
With city limits?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, you said, then you changed, our zone.
Residential zones.
Thank you.
Oh, the residential zones, not the city, the whole city limits?
Well, it's residential, the city.
Well, our zone, right?
Commercial limits, city zones, our zones, citywide. Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
To clarify language, right?
Six months, all right. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I want to clarify.
I'll vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see it clarified.
Well, it comes back to us, Mickey, and we can do whatever we want with it.
Except that planning too...
Okay, all right.
They didn't give us what we're supposed to be getting.
Our last item of business is get a motion to discuss GIF grant for the fire department.
Some of...
Second.
All right. Last week I was notified by the, by the county of us being eligible for a 100% grant for the fire department. Yes.
Yeah, 100%.
This is 100%. No, we don't have to chip in any money. Application, or the application is due July the 10th, I believe, 14th. And so we didn't have much time to do this. The fire department, and as y'all remember, we're still needing breathing apparatuses at $6,000 to $7,000 per unit. This grant is for $50,000 and will buy approximately six to seven units. And we got it, seemed like we got a pretty good chance of getting it. So that's what this resolution is for. There's no commitment financially from the city. It's completely 100% grant. James?
I would move to assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Any further discussion?
What is, what is the money to be used for?
Breathing apparatuses.
So that would replace the previous?
No, no, no. Additional. We need to buy almost 30 to 40 breathing apparatuses. We only bought 10.
Didn't we have one larger grant that we haven't heard from yet?
No. That one was, we've got, no, not for this. Terry?
Bob, the other larger grant, it hasn't come up yet.
Hasn't been decided yet?
No, no. It's, that's that FEMA, I think is what it was. And it's not even...
And that's at $150,000.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't even come up till later on in the year, towards the end of the year, I think.
Any other comments? Okay. Where are we?
A motion and a second to assign a number and read it for passage.
So guess we need roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five zero, the number will be 685. Resolution authorizing the chief of Eureka Springs Fire Department to apply for, and if awarded, accept a grant from the Arkansas Rural Economic Development Commission, whereas the city council has determined that the city of Eureka Springs meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for a grant under the General Improvement Fund, give community enhancement grants, and, whereas the Eureka Springs Fire Department is presenting plans to use any awarded grant monies to purchase necessary self-contained breathing units for the department, and, whereas the city council recognizes the need for the project, concurs with the project importance, and supports the Eureka Springs Fire Department in the efforts to proceed with the same. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Fire chief is hereby authorized to submit an application, a formal request, to the Arkansas Rural Economic Development Commission, purpose of securing grant funds in the amount of $50,000 to aid and assist the city of Eureka Springs. There are no matching funds required for this grant. Mayor is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project if awarded. And I have a request. Could we please have a motion to change this to 2243?
And that's the ordinance on the...
Hickory Street. Reclaim the jurisdiction over Hickory Street.
Some more?
Second.
Thank you.
Everybody understand, we're changing ordinance reading for the Hickory Street vacations to 2243.
Yes.
All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Any agendas? All right, city council comments. Bob?
Part of the problem that Planning Commission had, part of the fiasco, was when we sent it back to them the first time, we didn't give them any directions in terms of what they were supposed to look at, or what they were supposed to do with it. We just said, here it is. That was part of the problem. I think we're, from my perspective, we're doing the same thing now with B and B. We're just saying, look at B and Bs for six months. I, I think that we cause part of the problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bob. Terry?
Nothing, thank you.
James?
I would like to recognize the Fourth of July's coming up, Independence Day, and for us all to celebrate free speech, because we practice it profusely here at this table.
Well, in response to something that Bob said there, we sent it back for reconsideration, and we didn't particularly want to hamper their thinking about the process, it's allowed to be free form, and it wouldn't have been a real issue if they hadn't got hung up on the word similar and made very distinct changes from their first meeting to the second meeting in the interpretation and the enforcement of it. That's all I have to say.
Mickey?
When we sent food trucks to planning, we gave them no directions. Really good thing that I was at the meeting, because they said, well, council wants us to look into food trucks, what about it? We have to give them clarification, direction, exactly what Bob was saying. It's not that hard to say, we would like to send this to planning to clarify all of our tourism lodging things. Let's look at the wordage on all of them. It's not that hard to do. They do not always sit there and call the mayor to say, what is this about? Let's give them clarification. Don't assume that they watch our meetings and know. Okay, then that's why I voted against it. We need to clarify. The Eureka is coming up. It'll be here August 12 and 14, 12 through 14. We've already had more people pre-register for the Eureka this year than we've had participate in all of our previous years. This thing is growing. They love Eureka, they're here for a whole three, four days, and bring their families. It's been incredible. So looking forward to it. You probably have already had visits downtown. I know, I'm getting excited.
Thank you. All right. Upcoming events, the July the 2nd, we'll have drumming in the park from 6 to 8 in the Basin Park. On the 3rd, we will have a Happy Birthday Stroll from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. from the library to the Fuller House. On the 4th of July, we've got a parade at 10 o'clock, starting at the library, coming down Spring Street. And on the 5th through the 10th, we'll have Floor Delicious at all the restaurants and bars in town. That's always a fun event. And it's July the 9th, we'll have the Floor Delicious Waiter Race at 2:30 p.m. It's at Spring Street. So that's always exciting also. And then the 15th, 16th, and 17th of July is one of my favorite exciting times, is the Fat Tire Festival, which is at Leatherwood and City Trails and Harmon Park, and that's always exciting. If you've never seen the Fat Tire Race and competition, you should go out and see it. They're quite, quite fun. And as James mentioned, Happy Fourth of July, and also Happy Fourth of July, and Happy Birthday to the city of Eureka Springs. We'll be celebrating our birthday on the 4th also, the city. So be safe and have a good time. Thank y'all. Motion two, Terry?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?